Mr. Watzworth, would you do the honors of pledge allegiance?
Mr. Watzworth?
Okay, um, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the city of, sorry, this is the city of Romulus, City Council regular meeting for Monday, May the eleventh, twenty twenty. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance to Governor Whitmer's executive order, twenty twenty dash forty-eight, section one A, which allows the meeting of a public body to be held electronically by telephone or video conferencing in a matter which both the general public and the members of the public bodies may participate by electronic means. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online from the Zoom meeting application. To join this meeting by phone, call six four six five five eight eight six five six. When prompted, enter the meeting ID number eight eight six dash zero five two seven one nine eight four, followed by the pound sign. Again, the meeting ID number is eight eight six zero five two seven one nine eight four, followed by the pound sign. To join the meeting online from the Zoom meeting application, click on the URL link and enter the meeting ID when prompted. During the public comment portion of the meeting, the raise hand method will be used to address the City Council. Citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment. And at this time, we will have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Roscoe. Councilwoman Tally.
Yes.
Councilman Watzworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Webb.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Williams. Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one, agenda. Number two, minutes. Number three, petitioner. Number four, chairperson's report. Five, mayor's report. Six, clerk's report. Seven, treasurer's report. Eight, public comment. Nine, unfinished business. Ten, new business. Eleven is warrant twenty-nine. Number twelve is communication. And number thirteen is adjournment. An emotional being ordered to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented. Councilwoman Abdo.
I'll move, I'll move for the approval of the agenda as presented.
Councilwoman Tally.
Support, I support that. It's been by, this Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally. The approval of agenda as presented. Ms. Abdo.
Yes.
Ms. Tally.
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Watzworth.
Yes.
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Next on the agenda is number two, minutes. Number two A, approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting held on May fourth, twenty twenty.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the minutes of the, of the regular meeting of May the fourth, twenty twenty.
Councilwoman Webb.
I support. It's been motioned by Mr. Watzworth, supported by Ms. Webb, for approval of the minutes from our regular council meeting, which was held May fourth, twenty twenty. Mr. Watzworth.
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Tally.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe.
Yes.
Ms. Abdo.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Agenda item two B, for approval of the minutes from the public hearing held on May fourth, twenty twenty. At six thirty, there was a public hearing, um, to discuss the twenty twenty-one preliminary budget. Councilwoman Abdo.
I'll move for approval of the minutes from the special meeting held, May fourth, twenty twenty.
Councilwoman Tally.
I support that.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the minutes from our public hearing held on May fourth, twenty thirty. Ms. Abdo.
Yes.
Ms. Tally.
Yes.
Roscoe.
Yeah.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Watzworth.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
There are no petitioners participating in this meeting. Number four, the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, as you know, we, we had no special meeting or study session at this meeting. So let's go conclude the chairperson's report.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
I'll make the motion to accept the chairperson's report.
Councilwoman Tally.
I support that.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, support, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe.
Yeah.
Ms. Tally.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Watzworth.
Yes.
Ms. Abdo.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Number five is the mayor's report.
Good evening, uh, City Council, Treasurer, Clerk, and listening audience. Uh, first, I just wanted to give a, uh, happy Mother's Day message to all the mothers out there who, uh, hopefully enjoyed their day yesterday. If you're a blood mother or a, a motherly figure for somebody, uh, there's nothing like a mother's love, and we appreciate you and, and love you. Uh, Council, I just have one item under my report for action tonight. Um, under this report, I, I want to give a shout out to, uh, Abby and Vern, uh, to our directors and department heads. Uh, quite a team effort to City Council, Chief of Staff, uh, I mean, our clerk and Steve Dudek who've worked with us on the technology. Obviously, this has been a different year, uh, for everybody. We, but we've been allowed, allowed to, uh, meet based on the Governor's order, uh, after study sessions and public hearings. Uh, I am proud to present, uh, pursuant to section nine point four of the Romulus City Charter, uh, the attached, uh, a concurrence for administration, uh, to adopt the, uh, General and Special Appropriations Act, uh, the tax levy authorization for the city of Romulus and for the Thirty-Fourth District Court for fiscal year twenty twenty-one slash twenty, uh, twenty twenty slash twenty twenty-one, as submitted by myself. Uh, the details of the military rates are in your packet attached on page twenty-five and seven six, uh, for the following rates.
Councilwoman Abdo.
I'm sorry, I, I jumped, jumped the gun there. I really wa- I'm waiting for discussion.
Okay, we just need someone to make that motion. I see Mr. Watzworth's hand raised.
Uh, um, Mr., uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move for the General Approve, of the Approbation Act for the fiscal year budget of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. And I understand that the Thirty-Fourth District Court budget will be, will be voted on separately. No, actually, that's part of this, uh, recommendation.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
I, I was going to support, uh, Councilman Watzworth's motion, except for the fact that I think he misunderstood what the mayor is presenting.
Well, there is a mo- I'm sorry, there is a motion on the floor. I'm sorry. A motion is on the floor, and before you can have discussion, someone is gonna have to s- support or second that motion, and then you can go into discussion. So I need a second on that motion. I see Councilwoman Webb's hand.
Uh, yes, Ms. Clerk. Uh, the motion that has been before us is to concur with administration and adopt the General and Special Appropriations Act and tax levy authorization for the city of Romulus and Thirty-Fourth District Court fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one, as submitted by the mayor, by Mayor Burcroft. He did not, in this motion, it was not stated that this was a separate vote.
That is correct.
But I understand what, what, um, my colleague Celeste is saying, um, I would come a second, or she would come a second, but that's not what the mayor presented, what Councilman Watzworth stated in his motion.
Right. My understanding is, uh, I think, uh, the motion was read by the mayor that, uh, that was included in the Thirty-Fourth District Court. Therefore, this one motion is appropriate. So, my understanding is, I don't know if Mr. Watzworth want to understand that, restate this motion that this is only one vote for the Thirty-Fifth District Court and the Appropriation Act. Am I correct?
Well, it's my understanding that certain council people want to vote separate on the court budget, and we have done this in the past.
But I, I think that, uh, as the motion have been read, uh, Mr. Watzworth, that whoever makes the mo- whoever second motion can, or what's the most read, read.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, uh, go ahead, uh, Madam Clerk.
If, if the council is not, um, satisfied with the, you know, just for clarity of the motion, the maker of the motion can withdraw that motion and restate the motion.
I, I will withdraw, I will, I will withdraw the motion and somebody else can proceed.
And restate it. Well, I mean, you just have to restate it the way you want it. That's all.
That's all, Mr. Watzworth. Okay.
All right.
I will, uh, make this in the, I'll make this in one motion that the, that the first vote is to approve the entire budget without the Thirty-Fourth District Court in it. And the second motion will be to approve the Thirty-Fourth District Court budget.
Okay. And so the second hand, I see, I see a hand raised. So the first motion is to approve the General and Special Appropriations Act, um, and tax levy authorization for the city of Romulus, period. Correct? And this is, um, for the fis- for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, separate from Thirty-Fourth District Court? Is that correct for the maker of the motion?
Correct.
Okay, I need a s- all right, I need a second. I see Councilwoman Abdo.
I will support the amendment to vote on the General Appropriations Act, separate from the court.
Mr. Chair, it's been motioned and seconded.
Okay, I'll, uh, the motion by Madam Wa- supported by Ms. Abdo for appropriation of act. Mr. Watz-
Yes.
Ms. Ab-
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Roscoe.
Are, are we voting, or are we having discussions?
Oh, God, it's not that hard.
Well, Mr. Chair, we have a hand raised for discussion.
All right, come on, now. Okay, discussion, please.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
I just want to be clear that this has now been broken into two motions. Am I, am I clear on that?
Yes, you are.
Yes. So we no longer have this one motion on the floor, we have two. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, we have-
Are we voting on the, um, for Romulus's, uh, tax levy?
Okay, Ms. Ros-, you voting, uh, no?
No, I am voting, if we are-
No.
I just want to be clear that we have divided, are we voting to divide this into two motions? Or are we voting on the levy?
My understanding is Mr. Watzworth is voting on two motions. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this- Okay. Uh, Ms. Ab-, this go again. Ms. Abdo.
Yes, for voting on the General Appropriation Act for the city. We are not, it's this, it's on my understanding, we are not voting on the court budget at this time.
Ms. Roscoe.
Yes, for the city around, you want to know tax levy.
Okay, he, he said yes?
Yes.
Ms. Tally.
I, I'm, I'm confused. I don't know what we're doing. I, I have no clue what I'm voting on. I feel it's not clear.
I kind of agree with you, uh-
I, I am not clear.
Right, uh, look like we-
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ch- uh, Mr. Chairman.
Look like we're right, we started from.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Watzworth.
I'm gonna withdraw the entire motion and let somebody else start.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Watzworth. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I'm calling time. I, what I heard the mayor say is what I'm, I'm, I mean, that's what I thought we were voting on, what the mayor said. I, I'm, I, I just don't understand how we got this far.
Right.
That's why, Mr. Chairman, that's why I'm with, I'm withdrawing this motion, and let's make it simple.
Right, that's why, that's why I wanted to, you know, excuse me. That's what I thought, when the mayor read his, uh, motion that we vote, and Mr. Watzworth will withdraw his vote, let's, you can go by the first motion, uh, wrote, uh, presented.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, excuse me, we do have a hand raised, uh, from, uh, Councilwoman Webb is requesting to speak.
Okay, uh, Ms. Webb, could you?
Uh, yes, to the chair.
Yes, Ms. Webb.
I would like to read the motion that has been presented one more time. To concur with administration and adopt the General and Special Appropriations Act and tax levy authorization for the city of Romulus and Thirty-Fourth District Court fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one, as submitted by Mayor Burcroft.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
I'll support Councilman Watzworth's motion.
Okay. It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe, to concur with administration and adopt the General and Special Appropriation Act and tax levy authorization for the city of Romulus and the Thirty-Fourth District Court twenty twenty twenty-one, as submitted by the Mayor Burcroft. Any discussion?
Councilwoman Williams.
Ms. Williams.
Yes. I was under the impression that, and I agree with, uh, Council, uh, Councilman, uh, Watzworth for us to separate it. I understood what the, uh, mayor presented to the council, but I also understood what Councilman, uh, Watzworth had also, uh, presented. Um, I agree with the city, uh, budget, but I do not agree with the court budget. I've asked questions, and I'm still not clear on why, uh, is the revenue and the expenditures equal? You know, there, it appears to be a deficit that's going into twenty twenty-one of seventy, over seventy-seven thousand dollars. Um, uh, I, I'm, I'm not, uh, the, I know the rest of the council members received the same letter I did from the judge, uh, over at the Thirty-Fourth District Court, uh, pertaining to the court bond. Uh, that, to me, my opinion, since the court wanted to build this court, then the bond payment should be a top priority. It shouldn't be, well, if we have enough left over. That's not what he said, but that's just my opinion of it. I, I just, um, that document that was presented to us, the judge on last year during the budget, said that she would give a more detailed, uh, budget. We are not getting that. We talked about this at the last meeting. And I just don't agree that we should be approving a budget that appeared to be a deficit budget. It's not clear. And if it was an auditor that created this budget, then I, I expected it to be on a lo- uh, auditor, auditor's letterhead, not, you know, in a form of a Word document. And, you know, what is the recommendations to the court for the lack of the fund balance? There, there don't appear to be a fund balance. Shouldn't we, when you're going into a budget for the next fiscal year, shouldn't you have a fund balance? None of this was, was clear to me. So I, I can't agree to something that I'm not, uh, that I don't agree with.
Is that all, Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, well, and, and I would just like to know, in, in this, the court budget, where there appears to be a seventy-seven, over a seventy-seven thousand dollar, uh, deficit, where would that money be coming from? Cause I don't see it, you know, that it was moved over to the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. So, you know, I, I, I have still too many questions, unanswered questions, uh, concerning the court's budget.
If that's all, there's no further comment from Councilwoman Williams. Um, we have another hand raised, Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Abdo.
Thank you. Uh, I have the same concerns that Councilwoman Williams has. If you, we, we're taking a look at this budget here, and they've been de- in deficit spending for two years in a row. And now they are asking for an additional half million dollars for next year. That's crazy, when they're already in deficit funding. I would like to move to amend the General Appropriations Act to the court for an appropriation so that they can, their appropriation, what we do appropriate them is four million, four hundred and seven dollars, four hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars, which is basically the budget they had last year. I do not agree with increasing this by another five hundred thousand dollars. And I, I don't know at this time if it's appropriate to make that move now.
No, because there's a motion on the floor. The maker of the motion would have to withdraw, so you're in discussion.
Okay, well, then I can't vote for this either. Um, I would, if the maker would like to withdraw to amend it so that we are not giving the actual, the additional five hundred thousand dollars next year, I will vote for it. If not, I can't.
Is that all, Councilwoman Abdo?
Yes, thank you, sweetie.
Uh-huh, um-
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Chair, we have another, wait a minute, uh, we do have another hand raised. We have Councilwoman Williams has her hand raised.
And I, I, um, uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I also agree with that because, uh, from two thousand and twenty fiscal year to two thousand twenty-one fiscal year, there is additional increase. Where, where is this money coming from? Almost, uh, five hundred thousand dollars, uh, increase. No one can answer that?
Mr. Chair, we have, uh, Mayor Burcroft's hand raised to speak.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I guess I want to remind council that we had, uh, the financial, uh, company that's contracted from the court in our study session. There was a correspondence that I saw from council to our chief judge. Uh, the chief judge, uh, responded. I know that he also talked to council people. The, what I heard from, uh, all the communications is that there are gonna be some additional people costs, uh, with the new building. We also heard that there, there's some, uh, you know, direction that they're looking for from the State Court Administrator's Office as to how they're gonna operate. So I, I believe that, and I can't speak for all the council, but I think you've heard the answers from the court. Some of you may not like the answers from the court, but they have responded to, uh, what they presented with expenses and revenues. I think one thing I would say for any budgeting, uh, we started our budget process a half a year ago. I know that it's been a whole new world since the, the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Uh, I think, I believe that we're gonna probably have to sit down as we go through the budget years. And that would be for, uh, the cities, the court, the library, and others, to make sure that as we, uh, traverse through the year, uh, that we stay fluid and make decisions. I think that they're, you know, making the best projections that they can based on the information that they have. And I guess just as a reminder to the public, uh, obviously, the court's not even in operation right now, uh, so there are some unknowns. So I, I believe that what they, uh, answered the questions and what their, the letter from the chief judge instructed, uh, we tried to give the best, uh, honest, uh, projection as to what they were looking at. Uh, as to the direction of having a detailed budget versus what you were presented, um, I believe that you heard the chief judge as to what the expectation was gonna be. There was a different chief judge last year, as we know. So, I, you know, I think it would be inappropriate to not approve their budget based on what they have answered. Uh, if some of you don't agree, I respect that. That's part of the process. But I, you know, I'm, I'm just giving my interpretation of what I heard from the study sessions and the written correspondence that I saw and the conversations that I've had with either council people or the court administration. So that would be my explanation as to, uh, why you represented what you were presenting.
Mr. Chair, we have four hands raised. The first hand is coming from Councilman, Councilman Watzworth, and after Councilman Watzworth will be Councilwoman Williams. After Councilwoman, Woman Williams will be Councilwoman Abdo. And after Councilwoman Abdo will be Councilwoman Tally, in that order. Go ahead, Mr. Watzworth.
Uh, can you, uh, hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the reason I did what I did tonight was try to make this very simple. Obviously, it didn't, it didn't turn out that way. Um, we have two council people that have very strong feelings, and I was trying to respect their ability to vote how they felt. That's why I wanted to put the, first of all, I intend to vote for the court budget. I wanted to vote on the budget first, and then vote on the court budget second. And I feel that that would be respectful to one or two council people that have very strong feelings and let them vote the way they want. And that's what I was trying to do. But obviously, I guess, I guess that, um, simplicity didn't quite work here, and I'm done.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, uh, on the two, two- Yes, uh, on the two- to respond to, uh, the comment that, uh, Mayor made, uh, it's not whether, uh, in my opinion, whether I like the budget or not. I'm, what I'm trying to get a grasp of is where is the additional, almost five hundred thousand dollars coming from? The court, and the judge said it in his letter to the council, they don't know how the Supreme Court is going to rule on taking over the funding of the court. So, it's, you know... Excuse me, is that someone trying to talk? Madam Chair?
Uh, no, you have the floor, uh-
Okay, I thought I heard someone talking in the background.
Oh, yeah, I don't know who that was, but you have the floor, Madam, uh, Councilwoman.
Okay, well, thank you. So, so it- it has nothing to do with liking something. It's looking at the figures and they don't add up. That was my concern. When I vote on something, I want to make sure that I'm voting on something that I don't regret later. It- it, where- where is this additional five hundred thousand dollars coming from? It- it appears that it's extra money that's going to be revenue that's coming from the city for tickets and court fees and fines. How is that so if everything is being pulled back? How can you project to get additional five hundred thousand dollars? Where is that coming from? And those questions wasn't answered. And- and to say that you're not operating in a deficit, why, what is the seventy-seven, six thirty-three for? Where is that from? That goes into the twenty twenty-one budget? Is that a, is that rolled into the four hundred and ninety-four thousand? Is that included in there to cover that- that part of the deficit that comes from, uh, twenty twenty? I mean, those questions wasn't answered. And so it- it has nothing at all to do with whether I like something. I'm looking at it and it doesn't make sense to me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the next person that had their hand raised was, um, Councilwoman Abdo, and then Councilwoman Tally, and then Mayor Burcroft, in that order, then followed by Mayor Burcroft will be Councilwoman Webb. Councilwoman Abdo.
Thank you. My background in math, as you know, I taught math for forty years. This budget doesn't make any sense mathematically. I did spend a good forty-five minutes on the phone with the Chief Judge. When I said I would like more documentation, I would like to see where it's come from, the answer came, "You're not getting it." That was the direct answer. And I said, "Well, you know, this doesn't really make sense." "Well, you're not getting it." That's it. That was his answer. When I- when I asked over again, I said, "Well, the city of Romulus is responsible." "Yes, you are." That's what I was told. And I said, "Well, I can't vote for it like this." And the attitude was, "Don't then. But the city of Romulus is responsible. We have a responsibility to the people of Romulus. This budget is not a sound budget. This has nothing to do with whether you like somebody or not. It's just taking a look at it. What happens in a few years if they come back and can't make the payment on that building because they're so in debt? What- what are we going to say to the people of Romulus? Well, we approved a budget, which we gave them five hundred thousand dollars more the next year, that, um, even though they were in deficit spending, but, you know, we approved it. I can't do that. And I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks. So, next?
Next is Councilwoman Tally.
Ms. Tally? Ms. Tally?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, mhm.
Okay. No one could foresee what happened with this pandemic. This is something that has caught everybody, everybody totally off guard. Um, people trying to figure out what to do, how to go about things, and I'm not making any justification for anything. Um, but this- this court has, they're not a self-funding union, but they have self-funded themselves for a number of years. We have benefited as the city, as the city of Romulus for years from the court, um, being the host community. Um, and they have always sustained themselves. So, I get what they're saying, but we're in the middle of a pandemic that we have never experienced in the world before. And so I just believe that we have to come together and try to figure this out and this, and- and work together. Um, they have- they have always worked, uh, been self-funding, even though they're not required to be, be so, and our city has benefited as the whole community in, uh, for the court. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally.
The next person requesting to speak is Mayor Burcroft.
Yeah, Mayor Burcroft, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to talk about the process. I'm not going to get in the tit-for-tat about who- who likes the numbers or doesn't like the numbers. This is the process that we have had as being the host community since the first agreement nineteen ninety-eight. We just revised that last year. The risk that council is speaking of is the same risk that has been there throughout this whole timeframe. This being the host community has been a tremendous benefit, uh, to the city of Romulus. We get two-thirds of the revenue. So that, there's been risk all along. When we went into the expansion project that was based on demand, uh, I understand that there's maybe some uncertainty because of what's going on in the world right now. I think that's why I made my comment about all budgets are going to need to be really looked at. There are some unknowns. It doesn't matter if you're an accounting firm, uh, if you're a math teacher, or you're an auditor, uh, there are projec- you're only as good as your projections and how they work out. There are some unknowns with the court. There are unknown decisions that are being made. Uh, we're still trying to take what the court is presenting to us, just like we did with the library that made projections, uh, just like we looked at all areas of the city budget, and the- the process has not changed. So, uh, yes, there's always risk, and there's always benefit to having the host, uh, community have the court in their- in their boundaries, which we're blessed to have. Uh, there are some unknowns as far as opening dates beyond our control, but, uh, we're in this process. Um, we feel that the- the, uh, the decisions, the recommendations, and projections that the court have presented, uh, they're- they're trying to be as honest and as accurate as they can. So, I would say, uh, based on that, based on the motion that you have, um, you know, I understand what Mr. Wasworth is trying to do. This got way too complicated. I would just ask, uh, council to run the vote, uh, and we'll move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have Councilwoman Webb requesting to speak.
Uh, yes, to the chair. I would like to request that we move forward. Uh, we- we have to understand, that court is sixty percent larger than the original court. Money will be spent for furniture, for new hires, if it gets to that point. The court does not generate revenue. Our police department can be considered the administration of that. But, all I'm saying is, I'd rather have that budget in place because they do, the funding is there for the twenty twenty-one bond payment. So, next year is when we can critique the, um, court's budget. Because whatever's budgeted for specific items or purposes and not required to be utilized for such items or purposes, it still may be spent as long as it is within the same activity for which it was allocated or made for. So, if no one has anything else to do, I would like to go forward with the motion.
Okay. We do have two more hands raised, Mr. Chair, um, before you move forward. Um, Abdo, Councilwoman Abdo, and the next Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. Uh, the comment, "You're only as good as your projections," is true. The projections are bad. They're- they're in deficit spending for two years in a row and are projecting five hundred thousand dollars more. So, I agree with you, Mayor. You're only as good as your projections. These projections are bad. The next thing is, I know that there are risks, and there's always been risk with the court, but the risks are greater when you look at two years in a row what their deficit spending has, and now they're going into a third. I'm not willing to take those risks. But, um, I would like to thank the city budget people for the budget work they have done. I'm not unhappy with that at all, but I cannot vote for this again, and I guess I'm done talking. Thank you.
And lastly, uh, Mr. Chair, we have Councilwoman Williams.
Yes, and I would just like to add to that. It has nothing, we are seven individual council members. We are never, or most of the time, is not going to agree. There's nothing wrong with that. Whether it passes or not, we still have to give our opinion. It doesn't make us wrong. It doesn't make us right. It doesn't make those that will support it wrong or right. You look at it, and as Councilwoman Abdo said, the additional, right at five hundred thousand dollars, where is it coming from? You can't say what we supposed to do. We're supposed to be wise in everything that we do. If we approve this budget and we have to end up paying anything pertaining to the court, what the court can't pay, how would the taxpayers, uh, look at us? Would the city have to make cuts to their budget? Would we lose services in the city because we have to make up something that the court won't, what, revenue the court won't get? I mean, it's just common sense. It has nothing to do with liking the numbers. It has nothing to do with liking individuals. What's right is right. There's too many times where we, and not just the council, not just the court, period, will say it's going to be this down the road in the future. It's something totally different. Oops, I didn't realize that, you know? So, you know, my agreement, I- I'm like Councilwoman Abdo. I totally agree with the city budget. I appreciate every department for putting everything together. Appreciate the mayor for working with all the departments with the union, but I do not, regardless of what any other council member says, I do not agree with the court budget. Thank you.
Is that all, Mr. -Ms., uh?
That's it.
Any other comment? Uh, Ms.- Ms. Flurk?
It's, uh, you have, um, roll call at this point.
Okay, so, uh...
The, Ms.- Mr. Chair, the motion was made by Councilwoman Williams, and it was supported by Councilwoman Roscoe Webb.
Oh, well, no, Ms. Webb.
Webb, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. What's, yes, what, Webb, I'm sorry.
It was motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Huh?
Ms. Web- Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. Abdo?
No.
Your vote's yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, council. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Number six is the clerk's report, and we do not have anything to report. Number seven is the treasurer's report.
Good evening, council, mayor, clerk, and audience. Um, I just want to, um, update everybody with the processing of water and tax payments. All water and tax payments collected last week through Friday, May eighth, eight AM, because that's when the box is emptied, processed and credited to the account. It may take a couple days for your bank to process, or to show that they've withdrawn the funds, because we do get calls on that, but all those payments have been processed. All payments collected this week, Saturday, May ninth, through Friday, May fifteenth, at eight, eight AM, will be processed and credited to accounts on Friday, May fifteenth. So, I'll just give, uh, weekly updates as we have council meetings, because I know there's some questions and some concerns about that not being processed immediately. Um, so I hope that helps. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number eight is public comment, and this is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address city council. The raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. Press star nine from your phone or the raise hand icon from the Zoom meeting app. After you've been acknowledged, you will have three minutes to speak and will be upon the approval of the chairperson. Is there anyone that has joined this meeting from the general public wishing to speak? Mr. Chair, there are no hands raised, anyone indicating that they would like to have comments from the general public, and we have not received any emails.
Okay, that'll first, uh-
Or written comments.
Okay, that'll first, we will close that part.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number nine is unfinished business. Number ten is new business. Number eleven for approval is warrant twenty-nine for checks presented in the amount of one million, sixty-seven, uh, thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that motion, that we pay warrant twenty-nine for one million, sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents.
Support.
Councilwoman Webb?
I got it, Mr. Wasworth.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your hand wasn't raised. Mr. Wasworth?
It's been motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Mr. Wasworth, to pay warrant number twenty-nine for one million, seven thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Rob?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, warrant number twenty-nine, that will be paid.
Number twelve is communication. Uh, Councilwoman Tally?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Barton. Um, just first of all, I want to just give a shout out to you, Miss Madam Chair, and you, Mr. Barton, our chairman, Mr. Barton, for your facilitation of these meetings that have been different from our regular meetings. So, thank you guys for your handling of these meetings. You've done a great job. Um-
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I do have an announcement. If anybody that, any resident has a Romulus, uh, has a student in our Romulus Community School, families will receive a full benefits card. You will have the name of the eldest student on the card. You will receive it automatically, um, for the benefits of all children in the family. So, it's loaded onto a card. It's a hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty cents per student for March and April, and then a hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents for May and June. Families don't need to apply. This will be mailed automatically to every student, um, um, in the, uh, that's enrolled at Romulus Community School. So, please, graduate who has people, you have children in our Romulus Community School District, this is a card you will be receiving automatically. If you have any questions regarding this information, you can contact our, uh, Trust Board, our vice president of our school board, uh, next pile, who can provide additional information. Um, second thing, as everybody knows, my favorite subject is the census. Our numbers are increasing steadily. I thank, uh, all the Romulus residents who have gone out and- and done this, complete the census. If you told somebody to complete it, thank you for going telling somebody. We're currently at sixty-six point nine percent for the city of Romulus. The national rate is sixty-eight point six percent. The Michigan rate is sixty-five point three percent, and Wayne County is at sixty percent. And keep in mind that even though we have a high rate in the city of Romulus, we want our whole state of Michigan to be up at a hundred percent so that all our communities can get the, uh, benefit, uh, dollars for the, for what the census will bring. So, please, like, again, nine questions, uh, less than ten minutes to complete so as to have ten years of benefits within our community. So, thank you for that, and that's all I have.
Yes, I'd like to say, uh, you know, Ms. Tally, thank you for promoting this. It's very important, and I really thank you, and I thank-
Very important, and I really thank you, and I thank the community to thank you, and, and rah rah, I love it. Let's get these census done. Keep in mind, I got, uh, a lot of people. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have one more hand raised. We have Councilwoman Williams.
Okay.
Yes, I would like to remind the residents of Romulus, on tomorrow, Forgotten Harvest will be at the Romulus High School, starting at one o'clock until, um, uh, doing a few distribution until the food is gone. And then also, uh, gleaners have started, uh, uh... Please, anyone that's in need, uh, don't hesitate to come out. Thank you.
One more comment, uh, Madam Clerk. I have, uh, I want, again, I hope every mother had a great day. Uh, there's nothing like mother love. I know when I lost my mother, I think about her every day. And I hope that, uh, always enjoy your mother while she's here, because it's very important. And as check, I really miss my mother, and I hope that everyone cherishes their mother while they're here. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
If there's some more communication from council, number thirteen is adjournment.
So moved.
Support.
Was that supported by, who was that supported by?
Williams.
Uh, Councilwoman Williams supported it.
Okay. It's been motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Williams, for adjournment. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes, thank God.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Your votes, yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.